[S01]...
Good morning. I'd like to start the Board Supervisors meeting here for Friday, February 2nd, 2024. This is our 2024 Legislative Workshop and call this meeting to order. We have the roll call, please.
Yes, good morning. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present.
Thank you, and we'll, everybody will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections? Oh, excuse me, no, nor none. Excuse me, I missed the announcement of the Spanish Interpretation Services by Ana Rueda de Vidalas. I believe she is online.
Anna, we can't hear you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Ana Rueda de Vidalas, y yo voy a ser su intérprete este día. Si usted necesita algún apoyo, con todo gusto le puedo interpretar al español. Were you able to hear me?
Yes, we did. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to welcome and introduce everyone here. This is, thank everyone for attending the Monterey County Board of Supervisors Annual Legislative Workshop. We have with us today Margaret Arashiga, District Director, representing U.S. Senator Alex Padilla, and Congresswoman Zoe Loughran will be arriving shortly. I believe Mark Dinan, Legislative Director for Congressman Jimmy Panetta, is on Zoom with us today. And Senator John Laird is also on Zoom, who will be here till 11 o'clock, and with his policy advisor Kate Daniels will fill in for him after that. We also have Ana Velázquez, District Director, representing Senator Ana Caballeros' office, excuse me, and Dominic Dersa will be arriving shortly, representing Speaker Robert Rivas. Just walked in. Oh, there he is. And we also have Assemblymember Don Addis, who will be joining us a little bit later, but I believe her staff, Julie Cravodo, is on there. Also want to just thank the legislators for their time and attention in helping us to address these important issues for Monterey County. I'd also want to welcome Abigail Solis, who's a Central California Regional Director, representing Governor Gavin Newsom. She is on Zoom. And I would also like to thank and acknowledge the mayors, council members, and city managers who are either attending or on Zoom, as well as I would like to thank the public for being here and for their interest in this important meeting. Before I pass the gavel on to our Legislative Chair, I want to also introduce the county's legislative team. This is Chief Assistant County Administrative Officer Nick Chulos, Annette Di Adamo, the Legislative Program Manager, Ashley Walker, a state legislative and funding advocate with NOSAMAN LLP, and Maria Triplar, federal legislative advocate with Ballard's Bar LLP. And with that, I am going to turn it over to my colleague, Supervisor Askew, who will run the rest of the meeting, as she is Chair of our Legislative Committee. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Chair Church. And I just want to start by thanking everyone so much for spending a portion of your morning with us. And this is an annual workshop that we started hosting when Supervisor Luis Alejo joined our board, and it's been a really great opportunity for us to share some of the county's priorities with our legislators and our public, as well as to hear from our legislators on their priorities specific to Monterey County. We've worked, I think collectively, very well to build some very strong relationships between the County of Monterey and our legislative delegations. And as a result, we've been able to collectively move forward on a number of priority issues and priority projects that benefit our shared constituents. So thank you so much for joining us today. A quick agenda of our, a quick overview of our agenda for the morning, and we are on a very tight timeline, so we'll try to stay on the timelines that are listed in the agenda. But we have our CIO Sonia De La Rosa, who will provide a brief state of the county. We have presentations by our county department heads on some of the top priorities that we're working on here in the county. We'll include time to hear from all of our state and federal legislators and their representatives. That's sort of the highlight of this workshop for us. We have time at the end for comments from each of the five board members on the Board of Supervisors. And then with any time remaining, if we're lucky enough to have it, we will engage in some roundtable discussion. So we do ask all presenters to be brief, keep us on track, so we can make it through everyone's, everyone's presentation. And with that, I am going to pass the floor to our, in her second year, CIO Sonia De La Rosa. It's been an absolute honor and pleasure to have you on the county team, and I look forward to hearing your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to take the opportunity to thank all legislators and their representatives that are present, and also those that are online, for really for their relentless support of our advocacy of our legislative priorities throughout the year. And certainly, it's been an honor to work with each of you as we went through the storms in the last year. We got to know each other very well, first-name basis, within a matter of days, because we spent a lot of time together on the street, or next to a levee, or within our communities trying to address the challenges. So over the last 12 months, we've partnered with your teams to troubleshoot, strategize numerous urgent and emergent issues beyond the winter storms. And as a county, we've welcomed four new department heads, and those include our Agricultural Commissioner, our Department of Emergency Management Director, our Human Resources Director, and our General Manager of Water Resources Agency. In addition, we are currently recruiting for our Housing and Community Director, Development Director, and also our County Council. So with assistance from all of our departments, some of which are represented today either online or here in the boardroom with us, we've been able to share input on a range of legislative matters that impact our communities, from as far north as Bajaró and as far south as San Ardo and other areas that are in our southern part of our community, and then, of course, the coastal region. And with our strong and resilient communities and businesses, we are really in the mid, middle of recovery from last year's devastating storms, and still wanting for a range of resources. Some of our wins have included the opening of a child advocacy center in King City, at the home of our future Family Justice Center, for which the district attorney is a very strong advocate, and continues on trying to find other areas where a Family Justice Center would be an asset to our community countywide. And we continue post-COVID recovery in our tourism and also agricultural industries. In partnership with the community of Bajaró, we developed a plan with unprecedented $20 million in flood recovery. But long-term recovery is still very much a work in progress. And the Water Resources Agency successfully secured $23 million in new funding for our Safety of Dams project. In coordination and collaboration with our local jurisdictions, we continue implementing and seeking encapment resolution grant funding to address homelessness and better support our communities. Our public hospital continues to do well, and is while looking towards innovation and regional healthcare issues, we are focused on the standardized emergency management program, which would include the enhancement of our readiness to respond, workforce training, preparedness, and engagement. Public Works has completed multiple large projects throughout the county while simultaneously addressing impacts from the storms. Our challenges include, of course, the close monitoring of our state budget and how it will impact our county services, funding, and resources. While we are unwinding from the influx of one-time state and federal funding reductions, which generated both innovation and our ability to respond, but it also amplified the needs of our disparately impacted communities and their desire to be seen, heard, engaged, and have a significant, permanent seat at the table. Today, we continue our activities to learn to live and adapt with COVID with our changing workforce. And like counties across the state and frankly across the nation, housing affordability for our residents and our workforce is challenging. The inability to hire and retain has created excessive workloads, burnout, and under-resourced services across our departments. Expansion of broadband services will provide connectivity for education, healthcare, workforce, and looking towards alternatives to address areas that will be resistive to the traditional broadband and connectivity options, such as in Big Sur area. So the long process of reimbursement from FEMA, of course, you know, given our recent emergencies, wildfires, COVID, that continues to be a challenge for our community and our resources. And we continue to look for opportunities to fund our jail medical services with a range of resources. Our works in progress include those alternative, an alternative analysis for the replacement of the San Antonio spillway and design work for the rehabilitation of the Nacimiento plunge pool. A significant number of base wage studies continue in our, in our county as we're trying to adapt again to our changing market. And then updates to our revision and revisions to our county strategic goals will follow. And lastly, we as a county are updating our county financials, payroll, payroll and human resources budgeting system. So again, I thank you so much for being here, listening with us, but also for being a huge part of such innovation that's occurring in our county, and then opportunities to do better. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, CIO De La Rosa. There was a lot packed into that three-minute speech there. Okay, so next up, we're going to move on to our county department heads, who will present on our county priority, top priority legislative priorities. Each presenter will have three minutes for their brief presentation, and they will introduce the speaker following them. And we're going to start with Randy Ishi, Director of Public Works Facilities and Parks, to talk about the San Lucas Clean Drinking Water Project.
Thank you and good morning, Chair, members of the board, and esteemed state and federal officials as introduced. I'm Randy Ishi, Director of Public Works Facilities and Parks. Thirteen years, thirteen years, has this small disadvantaged farming community in the South County called San Lucas suffered with water insecurity. They're located approximately eight miles south of King City, and as we have presented to you in previous years, the community's water system of about 100 connections is owned and operated by a separate entity of the San Lucas Water District. And since 2011, a do not drink order has been issued to their community due to the water quality issues, and another second one in 2016. But actually, this problem stems back to 2006, when issues in water quality began to develop. This lack of safe, affordable drinking water for the community has also caused a nearly 20-year delay of a severely needed affordable housing project in the community of San Lucas. While there has been progress, has been made in the forward direction, there's also been some setbacks in the progress for sustainable and clean drinking water for this community. There's been progress with the state, and the state has been very helpful in that regard. And this last year, the state has also made additional efforts to assist in different ways. However, some of the solutions being provided are not what we would consider a long-term sustainable solution for the community. So the request that we're bringing forward to you is one that would provide a solution for both water quality, turbidity, and other water quality issues that exist. An interim solution has been suggested, it's being studied, but it doesn't address all the issues. We believe that a dedicated pipeline to the King City system would address the various water quality issues, including the turbidity and other matters. And so the project's scope would consist of constructing an approximately 7.8-mile, roughly eight-mile-long pipeline to run on the easterly side of US 101 and the railroad line from the community of San Lucas up to the city of King. The project costs has been rising over time, and so some of our previous estimates have needed to be adjusted. And so, some of our previous estimates have needed to be adjusted based on inflation, cost of materials, the rising cost of doing business, and so on. So, we're at this juncture looking at an approximately $18 million cost. However, it would spell a long-term benefit to this small disadvantaged community. This has been brought up in various ways. Supervisor Luis Alejo has been a great advocate for them and has brought this up to the public's attention, including through op-eds and other means. So, as we consider the priorities and you consider your various state and federal priorities, please keep in mind this community has suffered now for going on 13 years with water insecurity. And as time goes on, the costs of this project continue to increase. So, thank you very much. And with that, I hand the floor over to Ara Ajderian, the General Manager of the Water Resources Agency.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Randy. I appreciate the introduction. I've been asked to talk about the Nacimiento and San Antonio dams, which are arguably the most important infrastructure serving the county, supporting the groundwater basin upon which a quarter of a million residents rely, as well as the county's nearly $12 billion agricultural industry. Built about 65 and 55 years ago respectively, like all infrastructure, they require routine maintenance and periodic upgrades. And we have funding mechanisms in place to support these ongoing needs. However, following the Orville spillway failure in 2016, the California Division of Safety of Dams began closely reexamining dams throughout the state and identified potential safety issues at both Nacimiento and, most significantly, San Antonio, where the DSOD has mandated a full replacement of the spillway. It's important to note that it is not the conditions of the dams that changed after Orville. They remain safe. It's the standards now applied by DSOD from what they learned from that situation that we are having to address. If funding was not an issue and we could start all the work today, we'd be looking at an eight-to-10-year timeframe for design, permitting, and construction at a currently estimated cost of just under $200 million. However, funding is limited, so we have prioritized our projects based upon the potential safety risk and the ability to affect dam operations and reservoir storage. Next slide, please. At San Antonio, the agency initiated an alternatives analysis last fall, which we expect to complete by the end of this month. That analysis and the subsequent conversations with DSOD will set the basis for the balance of the design and permitting work for the spillway replacement, which we expect to take about three years at a cost of about $3 million. To fund this work, we'll rely upon a portion of the $17 million of state funding committed from last year's SB 104. Our next priority at San Antonio is modernization of the low-level outfits. This is a three-year, nearly $9 million set of projects for which we will be seeking new funding from state and federal sources. Next slide, please. Turning to Nacimiento, our priority project there is rehabilitation of the spillway plunge pool. Following emergency repairs we made last winter, we are looking forward to implementing a permanent solution for erosion problems that have plagued the plunge pool for some time. This project is expected to take approximately five years and an estimated cost of $17 million. We are utilizing some of the state funding for this project and have also applied for $5 million of federal assistance from the Department of Energy. That's my report for today. To this moment, to thank Senator Laird, Speaker Rivas, Senator Caballero, Assemblymember Addis, and our Fine County Board of Supervisors and their staffs for their support and good work to make the SB 104 funding a reality. And I'd also like to thank our federal representatives for their good work towards trying to secure future, secure future federal support as well. And that concludes my report, and I'd like to introduce Kelsey Scanlon, who will take it from here.
Hello, I'm Kelsey Scanlon. I'm the Director of Emergency Management for the County of Monterey. I'd actually like to go to the next slide first. So, this is somewhat of a summary of the county's expenditures to date, including federal disasters as far back as the 2019 winter storms. This data does not include costs from the 2017 winter storms, and we do not have that readily available for you at this time. But I do want to focus on what we do have available here, which is the 2019 winter storms, the 2020 COVID-19 pandemic, the 2020 fires, and the 2023 January and March winter storms, which in total has cost the county approximately $125 million in response costs and damages. Of that total share, $88.7 million are eligible for reimbursement from FEMA under the Public Assistance Grant Program. And the more shocking number is the total amount that has been obligated to date, which is about $4 million. And the extreme discrepancy between what we are eligible for reimbursement and what's actually been obligated is a result of several challenges that the county has been working with FEMA to address, specifically inconsistent and somewhat myopic of interpretation of public assistance policies, inconsistent implementation of policy and procedure for navigating the reimbursement process, post-incident policy changes on eligible activities under Category B, a high staff turnover at FEMA, which creates delays and an extended onboarding process, a very cumbersome request for information for every single project that requires a significant amount of staff time and delays the overall review process. And then, the backlog of FEMA review for all of our eligible projects, which are predominantly held up as a result of the 2020 COVID-19 response across the country. And so, we are really hoping to gather support for increasing somewhat of an expedited public assistance process and removing some of the unnecessary bureaucratic administrative burdens and support FEMA's continued employment of dedicated staff and low turnover with consistent and clear policy implementation and interpretation. Oh, sorry. And I will now introduce... I believe this is Social Services. I'm so sorry.
We will. Next up, we have Community Services Center, our Seaside Community Services Center. And we have Lori Medina, Director of our Department of Social Services, who is here in person. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. So, I'm here seeking support for Community Services Center in the city of Seaside. The department currently operates one of our district offices at 1281 Broadway in Seaside. The office and staff there in deliver community benefit services to residents, primarily the peninsula residents, but to Oliver County residents. And the services that are available through that office are applying for services like CalFresh, CalWorks, Medi-Cal, and general assistance. That building was originally built in 1975 or somewhere in that area and is in need of replacement. It has two floors and it's about 11,000 square feet. What we're seeking to do is transform that into a different delivery, service delivery model, a four-story building with 60,000 square feet, a community services center. We're thankful for our partnerships with Public Works Facilities and Parks, the District Attorney's Office, the Health Department, and the libraries, who've supported and continue to be engaged with us in this endeavor. And we also want to especially thank Supervisor Wendy Root Askew, who has really helped to champion this particular project. And the goal is really for a new model for delivering services that improves access, allows for better coordination of services within county services and with the community, and also engages the community. DSS would continue to operate our community benefits programs from this location with hoteling space to accommodate coordinating with children's services, aging adult services, and a variety of other common client services. And additionally, this building would house a Family Justice Center, a library, and space for women, infants, and children, otherwise known as WIC. And we'll also have community spaces. Next slide. So, this slide is a rendering of the building that's being envisioned. Again, it would include flexible workspaces for the services. And the Monterey County Free Libraries would have space for children's programming and family activities. We've also been collaborating with the DE's office on housing the Family Justice Center at this location to provide a convenient space for victim advocate services. And finally, there'd be community organizations, which have space for community organizations to meet and host forums. And parking is also included in the scope of this project. Next slide. So, the ask, the county has already invested $3 million into this project. A lot of that has to do with the design and engineering. The total project cost is estimated at about $112 million. The plan's to begin construction in 2027. And again, this is really reimagining how we could deliver services with opportunities to co-locate, to have a kind of a hub, a resource hub that delivers several services, a place where if other services, county services, or other community partners need to coordinate services so that a client only has to stop at one location as opposed to going to numerous places around the county, that's what we're really envisioning, and we really think it's going to be a model for how we deliver services in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Medina. Next up, we have Roxanne Wilson, our Homeless Services Director, to speak about the need for homeless funding formula. I believe Roxanne Wilson is online. Do we have her ready?
My apologies, I was getting promoted to be a presenter. So, good morning and thank you so much for this opportunity to discuss the homeless funding formulas. But before I get started, I would also like to thank the state, our state and federal partners for your deep investments in addressing our local homeless and housing crisis. Because of your assistance, Monterey County has been on a downward trend for reducing homelessness since 2017, having reduced it overall by 28%. And as you may recall, the Homeless Emergency Aid Program, also known as HEEP, which was released in 2018, really was the first unprecedented wave of investments from the state, which led to the opening of the county's first and largest low-barrier housing navigation center. As the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program funding rolled out, we have also noticed that variances in the pit have often led to negative impacts on our local allocations, even though we were doing everything right. We rolled out Housing First and reduced barriers to entry. We increased collaboration among all stakeholders. It released the Lead Me Home Five-Year Plan to address homelessness and worked with seven jurisdictions to adopt this plan. We prioritize permanent housing, continue to work to improve our coordinated entry system, continue training on providing, trainings to, on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we also created two lived experience advisory boards, one specifically for transition-age youth. And yet, we have lost money because our allocations are heavily influenced by the performance of other communities and not solely on our own. Therefore, we respectfully request that our state and federal partners consider other factors when determining local allocation, so we can continue funding the system that is proving to work. In HHAP Round Four, our community lost more than $1 million that we use to support our homeless response network. And since our 2024 point in time took place this week, we will soon learn how this loss of funding has impacted our downward trend. Again, thank you so much for your time. I'm available should you have any other questions. Have a good day.
Thank you so much for the summary on that, Roxanne. Next up, we have Jack Murphy, our Interim Military and Veterans Affairs Officer, to speak about the Monterey County Veterans Home Priority Project.
Good morning, Chair Church, elected and appointed officials and members of the Legislative Workshop, as introduced by Supervisor Askew. My name's Jack Murphy. I'm the interim Director for the Military and Veterans Affairs Office. Thank you for the opportunity to advocate on behalf of the Central Coast veteran community. California proudly has 1.6 million veterans, which is the largest population in the country for any state. Many of these veterans are elderly, they have disabled, they're also disabled Korea, Vietnam, and Gulf War-era veterans, and they have acute medical needs. The region is fortunate to have a rich military history, and with that have come many VA medical clinics across the area, a robust healthcare infrastructure, economic and employment opportunities, and community and social services for our veterans. Unfortunately, what's still missing is a long-term healthcare facility for veterans and their spouses. The proposed development of a Calvet Veterans Home here in the Central Coast, ideally in Monterey County, on the former Fort Ord, is our answer to the deficit of veteran healthcare and long-term housing. The legislative proposal, this legislative proposal was a priority in 2023. It has deep support from the veteran community to include numerous veteran-serving organizations, the California Association of County Veteran Service Officers, support from dozens of elected officials and municipalities across neighboring counties. We've met with federal representatives, state assembly and senate leaders to garner support towards this effort, most recently with Assemblymember Addis's office, and all agree that this should remain a priority for the county. Our request is that the 2024 legislative session, for this session, is that this proposal remain at the forefront of options to expand housing and long-term healthcare for Central Coast veterans. Ultimately, we seek a legislative action to develop a ninth California Veterans Home here on the Central Coast. The following two slides will depict some of the background information for the long-term healthcare needs of our veterans. Next slide, just leave it on that slide, please. As you can see, there are currently eight California Veterans Homes across the state. These homes provide housing and long-term healthcare for veterans who are 55 and older, disabled veterans, homeless veterans, and it also includes their spouses, so we can have families being housed in these facilities. Sadly, as you can see, there is not a Calvet home within a two-and-a-half-hour drive of the Central Coast. Moreover, wait periods for the remaining eight homes are anywhere between three and five years on a routine basis. Next slide. This graph shows that of California's 1.6 million veterans, we are accessing disability benefits and healthcare needs at a higher rate than any generation in the past. So, the need is clearly there. In 2019, California's Veterans Healthcare Compensation totaled over $8.3 billion, highlighting the importance of preserving and protecting veterans' long-term healthcare services within the state. It's noteworthy that since our last legislative proposal in 2023, the Department of Veterans Affairs has already opened two community living centers in the East Bay and has another one under construction. So, this clearly indicates it's a federal priority to provide long-term healthcare for veterans. Similarly, Governor Newsom's Prop 1, which is going to be, our voters in March, earmarks, specifically earmarks $1 billion to provide healthcare for our most at-risk veterans, those who are homeless, at risk of being homeless, or are suffering from mental health or substance use disorders. It's clearly a priority for the governor's administration. What we're asking is that this become a legislative priority, not only for the county, but also for our state. And we want a ninth Veterans Home to help provide housing and long-term healthcare for our veterans and their families. Thank you very much for allowing me to advocate for this community. I'll be followed by our Assistant CIO Nick Chulios.
I actually believe I have the next one. Thank you, sir. So, regarding the farm bill reauthorization...
Introduction, Maria Triplar, who's going to speak about a farm bill reauthorization and immigration considerations. Thank you, Maria.
Thank you. Regarding this year's farm bill reauthorization, our most recent farm bill was authorized in 2018. It's typically a five-year authorization. However, it was extended for an additional one year, which is why we are still under the 2018 model. And the farm bill is a critical piece of legislation across the country, in particular for rural communities such as ours. And it includes many agricultural reforms that are intended to improve the health and protect the environment of all county residents, looking at federal nutrition programs, improving access to healthy food, promoting environmental stewardship, protecting our food supply, and then robustly funding rural development. And much of this is done through loans and loan guarantees, along with federal formulas and direct competitive grant programs, which are intended to assist counties. One of the biggest challenges that many farms in Monterey County face is that implemented in 2018 was a cap of an adjusted gross income of $900,000. in 2018 was a cap of an adjusted gross income of $900,000. And this is particularly challenging across the state of California and, of course, in others, because this is a gross number and not a net number. And as everyone knows, in the state of California, things are simply more expensive, whether it's the ability to buy or lease land, fuel costs and what have you. And so because of that, and how much is being paid out, regardless of how much is coming in, many farm workers or farm owners and agricultural industries just are eligible for these programs. And I've been very encouraged by some of the recent conversation that have taken place looking at this reauthorization to take, to reassess whether the cap is appropriate, whether the number itself needs to be moved, and anything we can do to move that number or change how the formula is calculated, although that is less likely, would benefit Monterey County for that purpose. And so I do want to highlight that, I think is one of the most interesting pieces of the current farm bill conversation as it pertains to Monterey County agriculture. Looking at, you know, funding for the USDA Watershed Protection and Blood Prevention Program, this is another excellent program that does provide assistance to state and local governments, along with tribal organizations. And our own Water Resources Agency has been working with the Natural Resources Conservation Services to explore potential eligibility for this funding to support the Inner Lake Tunnel project. You know, as with all things agriculture, one of the pieces about, you know, you can have the land, you can have the produce, and you can have an excellent harvest. But of course, there is a workforce shortage that many of our agricultural industry is struggling with right now. And one of the biggest challenges, of course, is that approximately half of all hired farm workers currently lack legal status in this country as undocumented immigrants. And so in relation to that next, thank you, is looking at ways to provide that pathway so that our farm owners can access the labor population needed to effectively harvest and get that food onto the plates of county residents. And so one of the pieces we are looking at is the Farm Workforce Modernization Act. That's a particular piece of legislation that really takes a hard look at striking the right balance between the needs of employers, as well as employees, and of course, having those hard conversations about how do we do this? How do we get a program in place that could provide legal status and continued agricultural employment, but in a way that provides flexibility and also protections in utilizing immigration platforms such as HEAM verify? So that is one that the county has supported in the past and we are looking at again for the current cycle, and I think has a lot of promise there. Of course, the county is extremely engaged in finding opportunities for our, not just, of course, the farm owners, but the labor population, and ensuring that all individuals who reside in the county have the access they need for a healthy and productive lives. And I will pause there. I know we are tight on time.
Yeah, great. Thank you so much, Maria. That was Maria Triplar, who's our federal lobbyist, who's presenting on this. We're going to move right along to Randy Ishi again, our Director of Public Works, Facilities and Parks, to present on the bike skate park and the old Monterey County Jail. We're mostly on time right now, so we're, keep moving.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Askew. As noted in this item, Monterey County does not have a public bike park available to the community. By creating a BMX pump track and public bike and skate park here in the central area of the central Salinas, it will create a safe, accessible and unique recreational facility that will enhance the community and drop participants from our surrounding regions, Monterey, San Benito, Santa Cruz Counties and others. This proposed site is linked by several multi-use trails, again located in the central part of the city of Salinas, and these multi-use trails are connected to other parts of the community, underserved parts of the community, underserved neighborhoods and several elementary schools. There's two recreational features that will enhance this feature even more so, as noted in the slide. And one other thing about it is location. The property that's being cited is easily accessible from US 101, one of the main freeway corridors, into and out of Monterey County, this is one of the county's most densely populated area, city of Salinas, and contiguous to the following recreational features: the Salinas Regional Soccer Complex, the Monterey County Vietnam Veterans Memorial Park, Car Lake, Tavadette Creek Park, and the Twin Creeks Golf Course/First Team Monterey County. So the bike park itself would be approximately 12,800 square feet. It will include various terrain and riding conditions from its pump track component and allow riders to progress their skills from beginner to advanced. And again, this is a feature that we do not have at this time. The skate park portion is approximately 9,500-ish square feet. It's proposed to include a quarter pipeline, half pipes, bowls, street skating features, other pedestrian features like stairs, rails, curbs and ramps, preventer fencing and lighting, and of course, the accessible pathways. The county has partnered with the city of Salinas in these discussions, the Salinas Regional Soccer Authority and the Monterey County Blue Zones Project. So the request that we're seeking funding for is an approximately $3 million request. And while the shape and nature of this is somewhat evolving in our further discussions that we've had with the Salinas Regional Soccer Authority, since the last time we had brought this to you, it continues to be roughly in the same location, features accentuated, and more or less will continue to serve that same designated purpose. We move on to the next project, which is our final project we have for you today, and it is an adaptive reuse project, a very creative solution for the old Monterey County Jail. This old jail is located at 158 West Alasol Street in Salinas, and it was constructed in approximately 1931 using the Gothic Revival architectural style during this Art Deco period. It was originally a multi-level administration building with access onto Alasol Street and the jail located behind the building connected by a stairwell. Additions and changes to it had occurred over time, with additions circa 1950 from the original building and has served as the county's primary jail until a new jail was completed in 1977. In 2004, the old Monterey County Jail was listed on the U.S. National Register of Historic Places, reflecting its architectural significance and for areas where labor advocate Cesar Chavez of the UFW had been in prison. It is the only historic landmark of the farm worker rights movement on the Central Coast. And as we look through the information here, getting to the request itself and in terms of the possible adaptive reuse for it, in 2014, the county began efforts to assess the potential reuse of this facility and site. A feasibility study evaluated nine options ranging from demolition, on the low end of the spectrum in terms of cost, to full restoration, which was on the most expensive of the range of options. And that range at that point in time was on the low end approximately $4 million. On the high end, it was approximately $34 million, again at that time of the feasibility study. Now, in 2016, the county board selected to demolish the facility, but in 2017, we changed the course of the ship and to explore this adaptive reuse of the facility. An idea that continues to be sought for is a family justice center in the Salinas region through the district attorney's office, and this is a potential location where the type of adaptive reuse and repurposing could occur for a family justice center. At this juncture, the county's request is for approximately $17.25 million for retaining the administrative building portion of the old Monterey County Jail, again a significant piece of historic resources. And so the historic resource that fronts Alasol Street could be used as a museum dedicated to the farm labor movement, and the admin park, sorry, admin building could also have a new memorial park dedicated to Cesar Chavez as part of its features. That rounds out Steph's presentation. We have both for questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Randy. We really appreciate the presentation. We are next up moving to some remarks by our Monterey County Board of Supervisors regarding 2024 priorities specific to their districts and the county. But before we do that, we're going to bump over to welcome Senator John Laird, who's joining us on Zoom. He has a time, hard time crunch here, so we are going to welcome Senator John Laird for some remarks first.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And talking about everything that was raised in three minutes is like speed dating, so let me do this here. Just to mention that the senate district will change in December and all of Monterey County will come in. Salinas and the Salinas Valley down to King City that is not there will be there. The biggest issue, and I'm not sure it was recognized by some of the presentations this year, will be the state budget. It's at least $38 billion in deficit. The governor's proposed budget only cut $8 billion. And so there will be wide discussions about how this is going to happen, and I'm going to want to work with you to make sure that we triage and we try to protect things. It might not be realistic to think nothing will be cut. So you should not negotiate against yourself, but you start to think about how you would want to deal with some of those things when that happens. We're also going to try to make sure that we're protecting in the budget some of the allocations, such as the water agency's application for Carmel River flood planning, for the residents that were displaced in Paharo and the money that is in the budget for that. And also, we've been working with Big Sur to protect them in the floods. Three issues that came up. The first, let me talk about the veterans' home. We confirmed the veterans secretary a few weeks ago, and I pressed this in private and in public. And the administration at this point does not support it for the following reasons: In the next 10 years, the number of veterans in the state will drop by 500,000. This would require federal approval for federal money to come in, and it's the state's belief it does not meet the federal standards at this point. If there were to be a new veterans' hospital, there are at least three other areas with higher population concentrations that would be in front of Monterey County. So this is not in their plans at this point, and they indicated they would not be supportive of a proposal that came through, particularly with the budget, because they're having trouble filling positions. And the one thing that is a mitigating factor is what was mentioned in the presentation. Even though the number of veterans is dropping, they are aged and of higher demands, assisted living and memory care. I had a budget request to increase that because a veterans' home would take 10 years. The memory care and assisted living need is now. And so I think I will continue to press that with other legislators. On San Lucas, it would be helpful not to repeat all the time how long this is taken, but the fact that the parties have come together, the water board has met with the residents, the water board will issue a study next month that has a pathway. And I think it's time to start focus, focusing on how we're going to fund the solution. If it's $18 million, the state grants don't totally do that. I did a bill that was designed to help San Lucas that said, it's not just the disadvantaged community that can get a grant, it's the community that might be hooked up with the disadvantaged community. So if in fact, it's a pipe with King City, King City would be eligible to apply for the money. I think the discussion needs to turn and not necessarily, at least in private, not waiting for that, but how are we going to pay for this? Who's going to be ready to come up with it, rather than be surprised by that question when the study comes up? And then lastly, I really appreciate Era's presentation on the South County dams. The strategy of just asking for a big amount of money with nothing tied to it was probably a flawed strategy, and this is the right way to do it, to phase it, to have it in bite-sized pieces. And I salute Era, Sonia, and particularly Supervisor Chris Lopez for the leadership on that. And the state is coming up with over $3 million to ground-truth the numbers. That should have been done, but it needs to be done. That's coming. The 17 million, as was mentioned, is being repurposed, and there are grant monies available for dam safety, and that process will start in the spring. And I think the state share for the first part, you can start to see in that. And our federal partners have been very good in suggesting different options to get there, but have to be some local part. But I think we're on the track to get toward the first piece of it. And there have been meetings of all the state representatives, agency and elected, federal representatives, some of the agencies and electeds. We still have to do some locals, but there is significant progress on that, and I really salute the people I called out in doing that. I think that's three minutes. I think I jammed a lot into it, and I look forward to working with you on the other issues going forward because this is going to be a bumpy year, and I hope to God, they're talking about over seven inches of rain in this next storm in Big Sur, we're probably going to be back to having to figure out how to help mitigate those things. Thanks for allowing me to go out of order, and I apologize for having to leave in a few minutes.
Thank you so much, Senator Laird. You packed a lot into that three minutes, but we really appreciate all of the work that you're doing on our behalf. We're going to bump back into the County Board of Supervisors comments, and we've got Supervisor Luis Alejo up first, and we've got two minutes allocated for each supervisor comment. So if we can do our best to stay on that, we're a little behind in time at this point.
For sure.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I wanted to, first of all, thank our legislative team, Annette, Ashley, Nick and Maria, for their advocacy on behalf of our 435,000 residents. And I'm glad that we continue to have this workshop. It's our opportunity to huddle with our state and federal legislators to kind of go over a game plan for the coming legislative session, some goals. And we know that these are not new. Some of these issues, we know they're ongoing, but it's always important to keep highlighting them because we know sometimes these efforts take several years to pass. And in fact, on immigration reform, our congressman, Zo Lofgren, has been a champion for many years, for decades actually, to try to get that done, and we don't want to give up hope to provide a pathway for our workforce and for other immigrants in our communities. And I really want to commend our legislators because they have been really effective, they've been really responsive during the last several months. Last year was the most challenging of the years, but every time we went to them, they stepped up, they rolled up their sleeves for us, they went too bad for us. And I really want our community to know how, what an effective legislative team we do have representing Monterey County. And also, I want to recognize our local partners because here in local government, we're only effective if we collaborate, if we partner, we work together, and we build those trusting relationships to get work done. And certainly, cities of Salinas, King City, Seaside have been partners, most recently with Solidad and Watsonville, to try to work on homelessness together, to really make some inroads and find solutions for our families, to get them out of danger and put them into housing and services. I also just wanted to say that as a result of our efforts with our legislators, even new programs, the first of its kinds programs like the Storm Assistance for Immigrants was created, setting an example for the nation that when FEMA cannot help residents, state governments can step in to help our vulnerable and provide assistance to them to recover from sometimes losing everything that they owned and really being in a really difficult situation. And then most recently, when we thought the timelines were going to be delayed for the repairs on the Paharo River, the more immediate repairs in the three sites, our congressmembers and our U.S. senators, Alex Padilla in particular, really stepped up to try to make sure that the Army Corps stayed on their timeline. As Senator Laird just said, we know that tough times are ahead with the projected deficit of $38 to $58 billion. We know that the cuts are going to be deep and they're going to be painful, especially for the core services that counties provide to our residents. So we don't take that lightly. We look forward to working with our legislators to try to minimize the impact as much as possible. And certainly, we had our point in time count for homeless residents on January 31st. We have had reductions in the last two counts, but it's resulted in our county getting less money, millions of dollars of less funding. So when we're doing the right thing, when we are reducing homelessness, I think our county was in second place with Mendocino County for the most reductions over the last two point in time counts. But we should not be punished with less money when we are doing the right thing and making progress in our communities. And last two things I would just say, I know the veterans' home is a difficult one. I want to keep advocating for that as much as possible, but I hear what Senator Laird just finished saying, and certainly for San Lucas, a community that's been waiting for so long. And we have had numerous follow-up meetings with the state water board. I hear another study, but we've been through this before, you know, where we had a solution in 2015, the state water board backed out on it, and then it's been since then now nine, going almost nine years with another study when we already know what the solution is for that community. So. So I hope we can find a funding source. It would have been $8 million cheaper versus now being over double that price today. Thank you.
I thank you. I also want to just thank our legislators for all their assistance through this last year, through the years, particularly in the disasters that we had in 2023, and particularly in my district and Paharo. It's been extraordinarily helpful and a pleasure to work with them. I really look at all these priorities that we have laid out, and there's essential things to be done. As has been mentioned, San Lucas Clean Drinking Water has been going on for years and years. The dams, these are all really, really important. I did want to take just a brief few moments here to talk about an item that's not on here, but I consider extremely important, and that is really wildfire prevention. You know, I think we've been really fortunate the last couple of years. We haven't had a major wildfire, not just in this area, but in the state. We've had plenty of rainfall, but the threat is out there, and the threat is really significant. And while we always look at the issues of property and life as was really being threatened by wildfire, I want to just take this opportunity to take a look from a different angle, and that is really the impact upon climate change that the wildfires have. I mean, we take a lot of, I'll look at a lot of technological solutions, whether in solar or electric cars to reduce our carbon print that we're putting into the atmosphere. But what we really do need is legislation that makes it easier to do just simple vegetation management. And there's, you know, that's really old school, it's not high tech, but it's very effective. Because every time we have a fire, it will go and throw just tons and tons, millions of tons of carbon into the atmosphere and really negates all the hard work and the sacrifices that we are taking part in many of these other technological steps that we're going forth on. And I want to point out, I think this is probably one of the most preventable natural disasters that we can deal with. Floods, earthquakes, tsunamis, drought, we don't have as much control over those, but on wildfires, we do. So I'm, you know, I think we need to just try to make it so that folks have as much flexibility as possible to increase on the defensible space, home hardening, and really just to try to address this at the simplest level. And with that, I'm well in my comments.
Thank you. I want to start just by saying thanks. I look around the table and I look at the representatives here as well as the folks that you represent, and I know that we have the right teams in the right place. And I say that because of the successes that we found, specifically in areas like broadband, bringing a farm worker resource center in Monterey County, the water infrastructure wins of the last year, as well as the reduction in homelessness. We're talking about that reduction as a problem now because we've done so well together in addressing that problem in our communities. And I still see San Lucas as a bit of a win. As we talk about the challenge that remains in water, there's brand-new roads in San Lucas. And in the next month, they're going to get streetlights for the very first time. That is because the attention that we've all been able to leverage on that community, but their biggest need remains, which is the water. So I'm thankful to learn that in the next month, we're going to get a study. I'm hopeful that it provides a path forward. I think that's what we all want and need for that community. And as we head into the year, I agree with everything that's been said, everything that's on the chart, but most importantly, that is my priority. And I know the priority of this board is to address the problem in San Lucas. I want to thank Congresswoman Zoe Lofgren and Senator Padilla for partnering to try to put some funding towards that solution in the last year. We know that Congress isn't a fun place to be right now, so we thank you for being there and doing the work on our behalf. And as we move forward, I know that we have to remain in the position of really defense on a couple of issues. So I want to thank you all and just put in at the front of your mind the position of defense on certain things like childcare. Here in our communities, as we look at funding, whether it's in the farm bill or other initiatives, childcare should always be included. We have to make sure that our families have the support that they need to remain really part of our community by remaining engaged and part of the workforce if they choose to be. That happens when we all invest in childcare. Water infrastructure that we talked about, continuing to invest there to make sure it reaches us. And also, just keeping in mind our rural nature. Most people think Monterey, they think Salinas, and they think the coast. But as things come forward, trying to perhaps take phone lines, copper out of the ground for our rural communities to still rely on them, we have to remember that we're dreaming about a future, but we're still stuck in the reality of today, and we have to hold our ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much to all of my colleagues up here for your good thought and the attention that you're playing to, I think, one of the most critical ways that we can make change in our community, and that's through the legislative arena. And a particular thanks to Nick and to Annette for all of the work that they do helping us get there. The county priorities that we've listed today are critical to all of us. There's no question about that. I'm especially supportive of the San Luis projects. I truly am. I understand the community has really suffered, and it's time that we are able to put forward some help to that community, as you've already been doing so well, Chris. Although they were not included in the county priorities, there are some District Five priorities that I'd like to bring to your attention so that we can continue to advocate for those priorities as well. These projects include the Carmel River Free Project, which Senator Laird mentioned beforehand. And I'm hopeful that our representatives here today will work with Congressman Panetta to try to unleash the roadblock that is existing at the federal level at this point. So that's a very important project to work on. The other is the Scenic Road Protective Structure. That's another project that we are just beginning to work on, but it's critical. It's a critical project to ensure that we can retain the reasons that people come to our community, and that's the tourism and the beauty of our area. We also have the ongoing problem with repaving the county roads and all of the infrastructures, infrastructure issues that we have. And I'm looking particularly at Carmel Valley Road. There are some overarching priorities that have not been listed but must remain a priority. Supervisor Church touched on that to a great degree, and that would be, of course, climate change. In my district, we have had wildfires, and then we've had floods, and then we've had mudslides, and then we've had road closure. Those are just the tip of the iceberg, and that's only affecting the Highway One and Big Sur to the greatest degree. But examples, so regional water solution, which would resolve so many of the issues that we have. And then again, of course, the overall infrastructure repair and maintenance. Again, thank you to my colleagues for joining us here today. You're always welcome to come, and we're always welcome in your places, and I know that. So thank you very much, and I'll turn it over to our legislative chair, Supervisor Ruth Askew.
Thank you so much. All right. A handful of things for District Four that I wanted to comment on. I just want to reiterate the significance and importance of the Seaside Community Services Center. When we talk about the need to continue to offer social services to our peninsula residents and our western portion of the county, that need is significant. And the library, the community needs a library, and the current library location won't be, remain available to us into the future. I also want to comment on the fact that this project is in alignment and supports the renovation of Seaside, which is a community that has historically been disadvantaged from the closure of Fort Ord. So investing in this project is something that benefits the entire region. Last year, we initiated a vision for a new Marina Health Clinic, and I want to give a huge shout of appreciation to our newest Assemblywoman, Dawn Addis, who was able to secure $1.5 million in state appropriations, which is allowing us to move forward on that project, which will triple to quadruple the number of patients that we're able to serve who rely on Medi-Cal and Marina. To our state partners, I want to thank you for continuing to prioritize Medi-Cal health funding and the CalAim funding, refunding for Medi-Cal in the coming budget. That is significant, especially given that Monterey County uniquely is challenged by some of the highest rates of uninsured residents and higher-than-average rates of residents who rely on Medi-Cal. Half of our children in this county and 70% of our mothers giving birth rely on Medi-Cal for their health insurance. Addressing our housing crisis remains a critical issue for my constituents and throughout the county. Speaking of homelessness, the CSAC At-Home Plan provides a clear path to defining responsibilities between the cities and the county and other regional partners so that we can continue to make progress and move forward in ensuring that everyone has a safe and warm and legal place to sleep at night. I'll wrap up and just say that we have the best county workforce that we could ever ask for, and our regional partnerships with our cities couldn't be stronger here in Monterey County. We've benefited from the personal relationships that this board has with other elected officials and that our staff have built and worked really hard to build with our city partners. And we consider you a part of our regional team. So thank you so much for your time today. And with that, we are off time. And so we're going to move on to our remarks by our state and federal legislators on your 2024 priorities that relate to Monterey County. We are going to start with, if we have Mark Denham representing Congressman Jimmy Panetta ready to go, and then we will, we do need to, we will need to make a bump into Assemblywoman Dawn Addis. She's got a very small window that she can join us, so if you could let me know when she joins. But Mark Denham, with that, we'll start you off. And we do have three minutes allocated for each of these comments. So to the degree that we can get back on track, that would be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor. My name is Mark Denham, Congressman Panetta's Legislative Director, and I'll be taking over the chief role in March. So I will try to make this quick. A big priority remains housing. We were fortunate to pass a tax bill out of the House that increases the low-income housing tax credit. We're hopeful that will move into the Senate. This is capable of building essentially 40,000 more homes in California. We are also continuing to push for a workforce housing tax credit, which would target tax credits to low-income housing or middle-income housing for our workforce between 60 and 100% of AMI. We're working on that with Finance Chairman Ron Wyden, and it is a bipartisan, bicameral bill. He is championing a first-time homebuyer tax credit, which we're introducing now with Senate support with Senator Whitehouse to provide a $15,000 down payment credit for families who are first-time homebuyers, as well as supporting renters' credits for those who are paying over 30% of their income on a rent burden on housing. He is also championing the More Homes on the Market Act, which is legislation that would double the amount of capital gains exempt from federal taxation to prevent the trap that a lot of our seniors and our retirees have, where they are trying to downsize, but they're stuck in their homes because of those capital gains. And lastly, an issue that I know is important to our local housing agencies is the Housing Act's Improvement Act, which would reform our project-based vouchers and increase that cap from 20% to 50%. I mentioned the tax bill. That bill also includes a child tax credit increase to make the credit more accessible and increase the refundable tax credit. This is going to bring many children out of poverty. It's something that we are hopeful will move into the Senate. And that bill also includes tax benefits for businesses to invest in machinery and equipment, as well as R and D expenses. The Congressman is on the Armed Services Committee and is committed to fighting for priorities that benefit Monterey County. We are specifically focused on the Naval Innovation Center at MPS, which is going to build up some new capabilities there. We're working on addressing military hunger and building and supporting military housing and military spouses, because we know that there's challenges here on the Central Coast. We are also, still continuing to work on the farm bill. We're not on the Agriculture Committee, and there has been a delay in the farm bill, but we're working on including some of the priorities that Maria had mentioned, including priorities that would support our mechanization and agricultural technology, which is important to our specialty crop industry, as well as on the wildfire portion, passing our Wildfire Emergency Act, which would address some of those issues that were mentioned earlier regarding forest management, as well as wildfire detection. So wildfire is another important piece. And lastly, I will say broadband continues to be a huge issue. We're working on ensuring that our communities are aware of the BEAT funding, a $42 billion investment in broadband funding, and also working on, we'll have a town hall in Big Sur next Friday to focus on that and extending the Affordable Connectivity Program. So I know I'm a little over, but if anyone has questions, please reach out to our staff. We continue to reach out to our office. And thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us today on behalf of Congressman Jimmy Panetta. Next up, we're going to move over to Assemblywoman Dawn Addis, who's with us on Zoom.
Well, thank you, Chair and Supervisors and County Staff. It's wonderful to be with you here again. It's our second time getting to do this presentation. And I would say, you know, over the past year and going into the future, our biggest focus is serving coastal and rural communities, which is exactly in line with what we've heard from the Board of Supervisors and from staff in terms of needs. Last year, and I know you heard much of this from Senator Laird and many of you already referenced this, but we were really proud in my first year to bring about $1.5 million for the clinic at Marina, as well as $1 million to the Transportation Agency for the El Corne Sea Level Rise Project. We are fighting for that money. I know that you know we're going into tough budget times, but we continue to fight to make sure that those funds are dispersed. And then we were really proud to work with Senator Laird, as well as county supervisors, for that 17 million to be allocated for the San Antonio and Lake Nacimeno reservoirs. That was a really incredibly important project in light of all the storms that we went through. We did a couple pieces of legislation and co-authored legislation last year that I think are important for this group. I know the Paharo levee was already mentioned. I was honored to support Speaker Rivas, who brought forward legislation to continue to cut red tape around rebuilding the Paharo levee. And then also with Senator Laird, given the fire out at the Vistra and PG&E property around battery energy storage, we brought forward fire safety legislation, and that was successfully signed by the Governor. I heard a mention of need for housing, and we put forward legislation to increase both student and senior housing, which we're very proud that the Governor signed. And then I also wanted to mention a celebration last year because we honored a Woman of the Year who was from Monterey County, Francisca Arroyo Rosales, who worked directly with constituents during COVID. And it was a huge honor to honor, huge honor to celebrate somebody from Monterey County and bring her up to the Capitol. In terms of this year, you already know about the budget shortfall and that it's going to be a challenging year. That's going to underpin everything that we do, but we're still working hard. I continue to chair the Central Coast Caucus, where we're going to be putting forward a package of priority legislation that you'll see is largely going to focus on coastal resilience and rural communities. We'll be doing bond advocacy, insurance advocacy, and budget advocacy to make sure that Central Coast communities are represented in all of these conversations. And then I was also named Assistant Majority Leader for Policy and Research, and so that allows our office to guide some of the policy conversations that are happening within the caucus. And finally, we have four pieces of legislation that I think are of interest to this group. We're doing legislation to extend an important program for wine grape growers to be able to fight Pierce's Disease and the glassy-winged sharpshooter. We also have legislation that comes directly out of a group in Moss Landing, who has asked us to advocate for a specific designation for mushrooms grown in California, knowing that California is the second-largest mushroom grower in the United States, and much of that comes from Monterey County. We're working diligently on utility costs, putting forward a bill to repeal the fixed rates in AB 205, and then finally, working on mobile home emergency safety. So it was a big year last year, it's a big year this year. We are incredibly glad to partner with the county supervisors, and as always, our door remains open. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for squeezing us into your calendar this morning, Assemblywoman. Next up, I'd love to welcome Congresswoman Zoe Lofgren. It's an honor to have you here with us in person today. And as one of our newest representatives, it's been just incredible to have you present at so many of our community activities and events, and your commitment to working with us is really incredible. So thank you.
Thank you so much for this warm welcome. Originally, I was planning to attend via Zoom. I was going to be at a field hearing for the Judiciary Committee in Los Angeles, and I thought, being personally with the board? Nah, I sent a lawyer to LA, and I'm glad to be here with you. I have really enjoyed representing Monterey County in Congress, and I've really enjoyed working with all of you on the issues that have bedeviled our mutual constituents. Starting with, I just want to mention the flood situation. We all know it's been raining. We just got word from NOAA, which monitors the flood conditions, that they will be putting the Paharo on a monitor status for Monday and Sunday. They don't believe it's going to flood. They think it will stay two feet below They think it will stay two feet below flood status, but obviously, we need to work together to make sure that everything that can be done is being done for our constituents, just as we did last year with the terrible flooding. It's worth noting that we have, Representative Panetta and I have voted for the bipartisan infrastructure bill in the last Congress, and those monies are flowing in to this county and others. We have more than $150 million has already flowed into Monterey County for overdue levy repair upgrades. And of course, we know that we will be doing the permanent upgrades. That's underway. Jimmy Panetta and I had a Zoom call with all the Army brass just about a week and a half ago to make sure they understood how important this was to us. And I think, although they've always been attentive, they've been even more attentive since that phone call, to make sure that the repairs continue, even while it's raining, they are continuing with the temporary repairs. You know, the Salinas River is also of concern. Last year, I wrote to some of the, all the federal permitting agents to ask them to promptly collaborate with the local stakeholders to allow the flood mitigation work in the river channel. And this month, I asked the Army Corps Flood Prevention Study to be started in the 2024 Water Resources Development Act. Now, that's just the beginning. It doesn't mean we'll do a project. It's just a study, but I think the study and reaching out to stakeholders would be helpful, and we'll find out where we are and decide whether or not we want to try and proceed further. I've really enjoyed working with the county elected officials, as well as our state-elected officials on San Antonio and Nacimento dams. I think we've made tremendous progress, and I want to especially mention Chris Lopez, who's been, this is in his district. We had a phone call, myself, Jimmy Panetta, and Supervisor Carbalha, who represents Santa Barbara County, with the Secretary of Energy, asking her, for her attention to the grant that we have, are pursuing through the DOE. And although she can't pre-commit, we definitely did get her attention. So, we're hopeful that that grant funding will come through. I want to mention the agricultural bill, because it's interesting. I chair the California Democratic Delegation. It's the biggest delegation in Congress, just the Democrats, and we needed to make sure that we had some representation on the Ag Committee, which we were going to lose. So, we ended up with, Carbalha is just south here, as well as Jim Costa, who's the next most senior Democrat. And so, they are looking out for our interests, which are not the same, as we know, as the Midwest. Now, I'm the ranking member of Senior Democrat on the Science Committee, and every Wednesday at 8:00 AM, Hakeem Jeffries, who is the Majority Leader for the Democrats, and hopefully the Speaker later this year or early next, meets with us. And we got a report from David Scott, who's the ranking member on the Ag Committee, that was very disappointing. What Mr. Scott reported was that although there's broad support for the Ag provisions, and as you know, we have worked to ensure that crop insurance will include the specialty crops that are so necessary, and to amend the adjusted gross income limits that have blocked many Monterey County growers from accessing that program, that the whole bill is currently stuck. The grand bargain has always been that the urban interests on the committee and the big Midwestern interests would work together and support the SNAP program, formerly the Food Stamp Program, as well as the Ag provisions. What's happened with some of the right-wingers in the Congress now is an insistence on major, major reductions on the food support programs, which we will not agree to. So, right now, that's stuck. We have a lot of things in there that we will appreciate if we can never get it unstuck, to name just one, that the definition of rural would be updated, as the county has asked, and Representative Costa and I led the effort on that, and that was very helpful. So, we're hoping to get this moving forward, but so far, as I say, we're stuck with this right-wing, normal people fight. I wanted to mention the Farm Workforce Modernization Act, which is bill, I'm the author of the bill. That is a bill that we worked on for almost a year. We being me and Jimmy Panetta and Carbalha, Costa, as well as Republican members of Congress, and the United Farm Workers Union that took the lead for labor, as well as Western growers and other employers. And we ended up with a bill that we're not saying is perfect, but it's pretty darn good. It's passed the House twice and has been stuck in the Senate. We reintroduced the bill, basically the same bill that passed the House, just updated with dates. It is still stuck in the Senate. We are hoping that we can get it unstuck. Certainly, our Senator Alex Padilla has been a marvelous supporter of this, but it's very contentious in the Senate. And as we have seen, some of the Republican leaders have been overt, that they don't want to do something that would help the country, because they want it to be an issue for the election. They did that in terms of the border discussions that have been underway. I've heard that in terms of the Farm Workforce Bill. And recently, there's been a discussion that the tax bill that the House passed this week, not, again, not a perfect bill, but some very important things in it. For example, 39,000 kids in District 18 would come out of poverty because of the child tax provisions. We had, right now, it's a surprise to people who get benefits from flooding or other disasters that they're taxed. Jimmy Panetta and Mike Thompson had a great bill that was incorporated in that to give tax relief for disaster payments. We also have a low-income housing tax credit provision that would allow for 200,000 units of low-income housing to be built in the United States using that provision. So, there's a lot of good in it, but Mr. McConnell and others have said they're not sure they want to pass it, because it would, quote, "give the President a win in an election year," which I think is a very sad way to approach improving things in our country. I know that this county has high costs. Salinas was recently ranked the seventh-most expensive city in the United States. Housing is a major issue for that, and it's an issue all over the country. We need to do much more, but I, and I will be working with you on your particular issues to see how we might advance them, especially administratively, since it is very difficult, given the divided Congress, to actually legislate. But I would be remiss if I didn't highlight the $50 billion that the federal government has already provided in rental and mortgage assistance to households during the pandemic. Just a couple of other highlights. We did, we have something called the Member-Directed Funding, otherwise known as earmarks. That was something that was discredited because of abuse in prior Congresses. We have cleaned that up, so that there can never be a personal interest on the part of the member of Congress, that there is a transparent process, that everyone can see, and that the funding can only go to governments or to nonprofits. So, I have made some requests, one of which is, and this has been approved in the committee markup, we'll see if it makes it through the finish line, but the Watsonville Wastewater Treatment Facility is very edgy. It's not, you know, if it fails, it would have a devastating impact on the bay, and it's in desperate need. I've got nearly a million dollars in this budget to help on that improvement. We also, in the San Lucas Clean Drinking Water Project, I asked for $2 million, but got just about half of that. But that will help as the study proceeds and the state comes in, because we're going to put it all together to give relief to those people who so richly deserve it. I also got nearly a million for the Salinas Wastewater Treatment Plant, which is also of huge importance. I want to talk just very briefly about wildfires. Glenn is right. It is a huge issue in this community and throughout the state of California, and frankly, throughout the country. There were times when the air quality from fires was worse in Washington DC than it was in San Francisco. And so, we are doing, I introduced the National Wildlife and Fire Risk Reduction Program Act, which is a lot of words, but basically, to use sensible tools to reduce the fuel in federal forests, to use science for early detection of firefights, to use drones to fight those fires 24/7, and a lot of other things. So, we're hopeful that that will be included. One of the things about the Science Committee, and the Science Committee has jurisdiction over much of this, is that we're the last bastion of bipartisanship in the Congress. Almost all of our bills have been passed unanimously, and we work together across the aisle every day for the good of the country, and it's a pleasure to do that. I'll just quickly mention that we have done some important things that shouldn't be overlooked. We have gotten funding for facilities in Monterey County, a half a million dollars for the Regional Airport, a lot of funding for a million and a half for the Bay Area, the Aquarium, which is such an important facility and a draw for tourists, as well as funding for the Arundel eradication problem, which is a huge issue. Finally, and I'll close with this, in the bills that we passed in the last Congress, when we were able to actually do legislation, we had subsidies for healthcare, and we had an estimated 28,000 people in the Congressional District, 18th Congressional District, that would have reduced healthcare costs in the Medicare program, because their overall yearly contributions would be capped, as well as insulin that could not be charged more than $35 a month. We also passed the PACT Act, which has benefited tens of thousands of veterans around the country. But I would note that we have 1,700 veterans in this county, and many of them, over 1,000, have applied, and that will bring them justice as well. And finally, on broadband, and I know Supervisor Lopez is working with the Rural Counties Coalition, and I'm meeting with you, I guess, next week, to expand broadband down to the southern part of the county, but the Affordable Connectivity Program has already provided benefits to 41,000 people, and reducing costs by $19 million. So, we have a huge challenge ahead of us to continue funding for that important program. There is a bill pending, which I am supporting. We'll see if, in this contentious environment, we can pass that, but I'm mindful that the need for broadband is essential, and rural communities in particular are losing out. And certainly, those rural communities are represented by people, both parties, and I would hope all of us would step forward and make sure that that connectivity, which is so important for workforce, for healthcare, and for law enforcement, and on and on, is met. With that, I'll close with this. I know that FEMA reimbursement is a big issue for this county. It is for every county. The backlog of bills due at FEMA is immense from the COVID era. We have not adequately funded FEMA to meet their obligations, and I'm hoping that we will do that. But I'm ready to stand up for your county whenever you ask. I'm just a phone call away, and I'm always on your side, and I thank you for letting me be with you today.
Thank you so much, Congresswomen. And I think the list of accomplishments and projects that you've delivered on for us are indicative of the strong partnerships that we have here with our legislative delegation at both the state and federal level. So, thank you. Honored and pleased today that we have welcomed Margaret Araujo here, representing U.S. Senator Alex Padilla. Thank you so much for joining us, and we'll pass the floor to you.
Well, thank you very much for having me. I appreciate it. I never get to sit up in the fancy area, so it's kind of nice. I'm a little bit nervous. I apologize. Well, first thing, I want to thank everybody for, the county especially, for writing the letter of support for my boss this week. He is going to be, again, I'm nervous. I apologize. Where's my notes? He is going to be introducing the Low-Income Household Water Assistance Program, LEWAP, and it is going to be providing assistance to families that are in arrears on their utility bills. So, it will continue to provide them water and other necessary services. One thing that I will say, I'm going to do this very quickly, because I know everybody is very pressed for time, immigration, immigration, immigration. This is not going to sleep with my boss. He's going to fight. He's going to continue to, you know, work on securing the border, as well as providing asylum to people that need it, and giving people a chance to achieve the American dream, like a lot of our parents have. Also, it's appropriation time again. We have basically a few things that we want to tell you guys. If, well, Monterey County does know how to write these requests, so pretty much do what you did last year. Send them to me. I can look over them and kind of make them a little bit more plucky here and plucky there, and get them, get you guys the funding. So, just make sure you get those to me first, please. We don't have a deadline yet, but I will work with the county on getting that done. And lastly, I've really enjoyed working with everybody. You know, the floods last year were insane, and I was, you know, helped out at the assistance centers, and I got to know a lot of the people in the county, and I really appreciated the help that our constituents got by us working together. So, with that, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here and representing the Senator, and it's also been a pleasure to get to know your office, and we really appreciate all the support that you've provided us. So, thank you. All right, let's take here. Next up, we're going to move to Dominic Dursa, who's representing Assembly Speaker Robert Rivas. Thank you for joining us today, Dominic.
Thank you Supervisor Askew. Thank you to Margaret for following Congresswoman Lofgren. I was going to fake an equipment failure if I had to, so that Anna Velazquez would have to follow her. But no, good morning. You know, to start off first, I just want to extend the thanks of Speaker Rivas for all the hard work, you know, since we met this time last year, again, under rains, but already facing significant issues, whether it be in the Salinas or Pajaro Valleys. Those challenges we experienced, it reinforced the importance of collaboration and partnership as we look forward to what it is we can accomplish this year and moving forward. That collaboration with the county has already brought forward solutions and opportunities since Speaker Rivas took office in 2019, such as funding for Lakes Nacimeno in San Antonio that he worked on with his colleagues, greater support for our most essential workers, farm workers that we know every day do the hard work to ensure food is on our tables, bringing a farm worker resource center to the Salinas Valley, keeping open a hospital in the community of Watsonville that serves not just the community of Watsonville, but also North County residents, and most of all, the collaboration between county, state, and federal partners to bring long-overdue improvements to the Pajaro Levy system and legislation to ensure that work is speeded, so that it's done faster. This year, as you've heard from the Speaker's colleagues, we are in a deep financial situation. I won't get into the numbers as much, but I know the one thing the Speaker would like to emphasize is the importance he puts on engagement and collaboration to meet these issues. That's why he's thankful to the Board for going above and beyond each year to ensure that our office is informed on the needs and requests of the county, whether it be through workshops such as this, or the monthly Legislative Committee meetings led by Supervisor Askew and Leho, and well-informed through us by Ashley Walker. And that focused advocacy will certainly be helpful to the Speaker and his team, as they work throughout this year on the budget and continued legislation. And I know it's something him and his colleagues appreciate as they move forward this year with the newly-formed Central Coast Caucus, led by Assemblymember Addis. Speaker Rivas's priorities this year will be, continue to work closely with his colleagues to find solutions that improve the quality of life for all Californians and protect the most vulnerable. Since being sworn in as Speaker over the summer, he has already brought forward signed legislation that will speed up the work on the Pajaro Levy. And with the expansion of his team in Sacramento, he's already been busy at work to ensure those staff are coming down to our regions to learn our issues. Those staff have come down to already visit Pajaro Middle School, Casterville Elementary. They've already been meeting with all four counties. He represents transportation agencies to meet with local stakeholders to learn more about the to learn more about the district issues so that they're not only well-informed on what's going on in the rest of California, but certainly what's going on here in Monterey County. And more is going to continue to be done. So again, the speaker would like to thank you for all your collaboration. It's no mistake that so many of the stakeholders here have consistently mentioned just how much work goes on between local, state, and federal partners, and looks forward to the work ahead. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And just to reiterate what an honor it is to be home to our, and former county family, to have the Assembly Speaker here as part of our community. Thank you so much, Dominic. Next up, we have Ms. Ana Velazquez here representing Senator Ana Caballero. Thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you so much. There you go. It's on, green. Oh, it's on. Okay, yeah, thank you again. I know I'm the last, so I know there's a lot more discussion to happen. But good morning and thank you, Board Chair and Supervisors, and everyone, all the other delegations that are here. I think, as was mentioned, this is a true collaborative and partnership in Monterey County, and the Senator obviously has a warm heart for this valley and will always have that. She sends her regrets that she's not able to be here today, but she is excited to continue to work with Monterey County to address its priorities. And as you know, she will continue to represent the county, Monterey County until the end of the year, where she will no longer, when her deferred oversight responsibilities will end, she will always have a special heart for Monterey County and will always be an advocate for the Salinas Valley. As Senator Laird mentioned, and also as Dominic Dursa mentioned, year two of the two-year legislative cycle began with the projected state budget deficit of $38 billion. Negotiations will continue, and we will have more information and more of the accurate projections when the May revise comes out. Please know that the Senator will continue to fight for core programs to maintain current funding levels, as she knows those are essential to Monterey County and to its residents. Our office also will continue to participate in the Legislative Committee as part of the county to be able to understand and learn of the ongoing issues and how our office can be supportive. So what's in the horizon for 2024 for the Senator? During this legislative cycle, the Senator will continue to work on bills introduced last year that continue to be a priority for her this year. She will continue to focus on housing production, healthcare, public safety, climate resiliency and adaptation, energy, economic development, and access to clean drinking water. I want to just highlight a few of the bills that align with the county's priorities. Senate Bill 37, which is the Older Adults and Adults with Disability Housing Stability Act. These are long names. But the bill would create a rent subsidy program for low-income older adults and adults with disability who are homeless or at risk of experiencing homelessness. This aligns with the county's commitment to reducing homelessness, especially our older adults who have a higher risk for homelessness. SB 225, it's the Community Anti-Displacement and Preservation Act. This bill creates a framework and technical assistance program with HCD to assist with acquisition, rehabilitation of market rate units, and the conversion to deed-restricted affordable rental units. This aligns with the county's priority to increase housing production and decrease homelessness. The California Water Plan, SB 366, would revise and recast the California Water Plant statute, updating its provisions to address extreme climate impacts that were experienced in the 21st century and we saw as part of the 2023 winter storms. As part of the modernization, the bill would require the Department of Water Resources to establish long-term water supply targets for the state to achieve, and would update the requirement that the state agencies develop a plan to achieve those targets in consultation with local water agencies, wastewater service providers, irrigation districts, and other stakeholders, recognizing the state's diverse regional needs. So this aligns also with the county's commitment to partnering with the state to address a critical water infrastructure improvements to the Nacimeno and also to the San Antonio Dam. Bills for 2024 are still being finalized. The last date to introduce the new bills is February 16. I do want to highlight two of the measures related to housing and climate impact that the Senator is working on. It's the small lots, single-family zone housing development. And this bill introduces vacant single-family zone parcels as part of her authorization of SB 684, and includes various technical changes and feedback gathered from local jurisdictions and planning agencies. The bill would create essentially more affordable homeownership opportunities to moderate and middle-income families. The Climate Resiliency District, so this bill reforms and enhances infrastructure financing districts and climate resilient district law to streamline information process and expand the types of projects these tools can finance. It will add projects that address air quality issues to the projects the EIFDs and CRDs can finance. It would also reduce requirements for local agencies forming these EIFDs to mail information to landowners and taxing entities, reduce the number of public meetings required from 4 to 2, eliminate newspaper notification requirements, and aligns with the county's need for additional funding for resources to address climate impacts. So just to mention, I want to highlight a few of the highlights from last year's. One of the bills that the Senator authored was SB 831, which was actually named after our zip code, so we were super excited. And this bill would authorize the state to work with the federal government to establish a program to allow undocumented agriculture workers in California to work legally. So aligns with the county's support of the Farm Worker Modernization Act, and also aligns with Congresswoman Lofgren's priorities. The Senator has also met with Supervisor Lopez last year to discuss the San Lucas drinking water concerns, and is ready to support policies that bring solutions, long-term and lasting solutions to clean drinking waters to support our families. The Senator also, through her district earmarks, did allocate funding to Monterey County cities. She was able to allocate a million to the city of Greenfield, 400 million to the city of King City, and 400,000, sorry, to the city of King City, sorry, and 400,000 to the Solidad Mission Recreation District. And also, thank you to the county for expeditiously utilizing the 20 million allocated also to Monterey County to address the winter storm impacts to the community of Pajaro. So with that, the Senator continues to look forward to working with Monterey County to develop any new policies, proposals that are needed to support the current priorities that the county has. And as you know, the Senator will always have a special relationship with all of the supervisors, with this community, with the Salinas Valley, and with Monterey County. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us today, Anna. And to Senator Caballero, as the first woman mayor ever in Salinas, she will always remain one of our heroes as well. So please pass our appreciation along, and we look forward to staying in touch and in partnership and in communication. All right, I just want to, again, emphasize how significant and appreciative we are in Monterey County of the relationships that you have with us, that our state and federal legislators have with us, that your staff have with us. I know we're in near constant text communication, either between the supervisors and your teams and yourselves, as well as our staff, and we value that, and we know, we don't take that for granted. So thank you so much for your partnership in working together. We are truly delivering results for Monterey County residents and meeting the needs of the larger community around us as well. So thank you, thank you. I do want to just comment that the Monterey County team is headed to Washington DC next week. Supervisor Lopez will be there representing as Chair of RCRC. Supervisor Alejo will be present, and I believe you sit on a couple committees as well? Yes, okay, and I'll be there, I'll be there as well as a part of the NACO Health Policy Committee. I believe our CAO Sonia De La Rosa and Assistant CAO Nick Chulos will also be present. So we will be making our way around to different offices, but taking a lot of these messages along as well. So thank you so much for your partnership. I'm looking at the clock, and we've got about, we do honor your time. We've got about 10, 15 minutes left. So I don't want, I want to get everyone out of here at noon. So I'm going to move right over to public comment. If we have anyone with us on the line today who would like to make public comment, or anyone in the room, if you could just raise your hand so that we can figure out how to manage time for public comment. So if you're with us on Zoom for public comment, if you could raise your hand, if you're with us in the audience, all right. So we're going to start with our Sheriff Tina Nieto. Thank you so much for joining us, one of our first female sheriff, elected sheriffs here in Monterey County, the first female elected sheriff. And we're honored to have you with us, thank you.
Thank you, and I'm honored to be here, Supervisors and our elected officials. It's really good to see that everybody's working together to really move Monterey County forward. But I'm here as the sheriff because obviously, as the lead law enforcement officer in the county, I'm representing public safety. And there are several bills, and we've heard from Senator Laird, you know, with the budget cuts, we don't know what we're going to do. So I just wanted to advocate for two of the things that came up that are really important to the sheriff's office. One is the FEMA reimbursement. With all the fires, floods that we've dealt with, and as we look to the future, with our weather changes and the patterns, I'm in support of Director Scanlon, that we redo the requirements. We really look at the criteria so we can get our reimbursements quickly here in the county. Why is that important to the public? Because we still have to do the work, and when we do the work, we're paying the people, it takes staff, it takes resources, and the county still has to absorb those costs. So if we don't get the reimbursement quickly or don't get it at all, it takes away from public safety because we have to cut staff and resources from something, right? We don't print money. So I'm here to say that that's a priority for our office. The other one, obviously, is the farm bill to look at, you know, how we're doing that. You know, ag is the number one economic driver here in the county. Economic drivers drive what, you know, your government can do, what services that government can provide. So that's really, really important. And Senator Loflan, I look forward to meeting with you at your office in DC because I'll be in DC schlepping legislation too, but in, I think, next week or the week after that. So again, thank you for your time, and thank you for doing this, Supervisor Askew, as the Chair of the Legislative Committee.
Thank you so much, Sheriff Nieto. Really appreciate everything you're doing to work as part of our larger partnership. We'll move on to anyone else in the audience for public comment. Otherwise, we'll move on to Zoom.
Hello, this is actually Robin McCray. I'm sorry that my husband last used this computer, and I didn't realize it until you recognized me. I'd like to make a couple of points today. By the way, I'm Robin McCray with Community Human Services, and we are the county's partner in operating Casa de Noche Buena, the homeless shelter for women and families with children in Seaside. A couple of points and a question. I wanted to emphasize that Casa de Noche Buena is co-located at the site of the proposed Community Services Center. The shelter provides, the peninsula's only homeless shelter for unaccompanied women and families with children. Until recently, when we opened Schuman Heart House, it provides critical services, and we opened in January of 2020. And in the last three years, we've served almost 250 women and family members. These are obviously critical services that the county has made a priority in partnering with us. I was concerned that I did not see Casa de Noche Buena in the architectural renderings, and I'm concerned, stands to reason if you're tearing down a smaller facility and building a larger one, and because there have already been some county concern over parking at that area, that there may not be room for Casa de Noche Buena at that site. And I'm very concerned about potential disruption of services or relocation of the shelter and its impact on shelter operations, our guests, and even our Community Human Services staff and operations. Another point, we put in on nearly $10 million, excuse me, $2 million, big difference, in tenant improvements in that property to make it a very beautiful shelter. We have funding commitments to consider, not only grant funding commitments for the use of that property for certain terms, but also commitments we made to our private funders and to private philanthropy based on our lease with the county. So the community did rally and help us raise a lot of that $2 million, and they have certain expectations around. We do have a membership with the county, and so that needs to be considered. And my last question is, what is, or is there, an official process for including Community Human Services in this discussion? And what is the timeframe for including us in that process? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the comment, Robin McCray. Robin is the Director of our Community Human Services, which in partnership with Gatherings for Women and the county, opened Casa de Noche Buena, which is the first homeless shelter that we have for women and children in Monterey, the Monterey Peninsula. And I can just, well, we don't typically respond to public comment, but I do want to be very clear with everyone that the county's commitment to our homeless services and to Casa de Noche Buena specifically remains strong. It was one of the most significant achievements that I would, and things I'm most proud of in my work with the previous supervisor, was getting that shelter opened. And we are at a beginning process in this discussion for schematic design of the new facility. And of course, we will, we remain fully committed to ensuring that Casa de Noche Buena remains integrated into the Seaside community in partnership with our nonprofit partners. So we can continue that conversation more with the nonprofit partners. We do have a town hall scheduled later this month, and I will intend to include everyone who would be considered a stakeholder in that project moving forward. So with that, we've got about three minutes left. Is there any public comment? Any more public comment? Nope, okay, one more, we will do one more, and then we're closing public comment after this one, and getting everyone out of here by noon. Thank you.
City Manager?
Go ahead. Hi, my name is Megan Hunter. I'm the City Manager for the City of Solidad, and I thought the session was really excellent, and I really appreciate all of the work that your department heads are doing and the CAO. I just would make a plea that the supervisors really consider South County when allocating resources and looking at expansion efforts, and continue to remember that we are the fastest-growing area in Monterey County, and are, including Chula, are really about a population of 80,000. So I just wanted to put that in your minds as you think about these tough choices on budget. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much, Megan, and we appreciate you joining us today. All right, with that, we are going to thank everyone once again for your time this morning. We skipped a couple of the items that we had intended to get to, but I know that our roundtable discussions will continue on a one-on-one basis immediately following this and throughout the year. So again, thank you all so much for your help. And again, a huge shout-out of appreciation to our county legislative team. I see Nick Chulos trying to walk out the back door, but thank you, Nick. Annette Di Adamo, you are a force of nature, and we appreciate you tremendously. Thank you so much for all of your work in pulling this together. And to each of our departments who presented and are working so hard to collectively move the county forward, we appreciate and value you. Thank you. With that, we're adjourned.